Senator Calvo.
Yes, yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. The Mr. Chair, the first amendment I have is for the to the body has been distributed, and it says, again amend, section blank of chapter three, and this is section blank Guam Community College, and the motion is to delete the number fourteen million six hundred and one thousand five hundred and seventy-four with the new number fourteen million eight hundred and four thousand five hundred and fifty-five.
Okay, does everybody have a copy of the this amendment? If not, please raise your hand. Okay, continue Senator Calvo on your amendment.
Yeah. That's that's the first amendment, sir.
Okay, on the amendment. Senator Penglinen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, just the first section, are we considering section one and then A, or is that one single amendment?
Oh, yield, yes, Senator, actually, that, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The the second portion there, that's already existing in the in the bill itself, in the gross bill, so there absolutely is no change in A, that was just written into the to the amendment, but that is already in the in the existing in gross bill. So the only change actually is in the the fourteen, the fourteen million eight hundred and four thousand five hundred and fifty-five.
So that's an increase in their.
Yeah, the A is exactly, there's no change in A as what is currently in the bill.
All right, and the the effect of this is an increase in the appropriation in Guam Community College of two hundred thousand?
Yes, sir.
And, okay.
The this is in result, the Manpower Development Fund, there has been an increase in in the revenue estimate by about nine hundred thousand, and a portion of that, again, is the intention to be used not only to fund the the apprenticeship program and Department of Labor, but also to help partially fund the general fund imbalance.
Okay. And so the the appropriation, the increase in the appropriation, is there any place at all in the bill then that earmarks that to the apprenticeship program?
Yes, actually, if you go to right here, the next amendment will will answer that question, Senator, the next page?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, on the Calvo's amendment, without objection, then, so ordered.
Okay.
You know, the power of the Gavil exists. Okay, Senator Calvo, on your second amendment.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, again, the following amendment is, again, in relation to some of the questions made by the previous senator, again, this is in regards to the appropriation for the Guam Community College for the apprenticeship program, and this is, again, an amendment to the section blank of chapter three in Guam Community College, and that is to replace the number one hundred and three thousand nine hundred and forty with three hundred and eighty-three thousand nine hundred and forty, and this is appropriated from the Manpower Development Fund to the Guam Community College for the apprenticeship program.
On that motion, without objection, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the next amendment, again, in the next page, which is, again, listed by number three in the bottom left-hand, is an amendment to section blank of chapter four, and this is an appropriation for the executive branch. Now, the changes to this amendment are in the changing from twenty-six million two hundred and forty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-nine, oh, that's already, okay, to sixty-five million, the sixty-five million sixty thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars, there has been, that sixty-five million and sixty thousand four hundred and fifty-three is reflective of an increase of four hun- of five hundred thousand dollars to be used for for general fund appropriations. And it, there is a corresponding change where you have further down eighteen million six hundred and seventy-five thousand and sixty dollars is from special funds. Again, those are the two numbers that are reflected as a result of the movement of five hundred and thousand dollars to the general fund. And by the way, okay, and the 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 what will, where you'll see the change in in those grand totals is reflecting at the next page, which is H, and it shows the Manpower Development Fund where we've where we've amended forty-four thousand five hundred and forty-five and replaced it with one hundred and sixty-four thousand five hundred and forty-five.
On the Calvo's amendment, okay, without objection, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the next amendment is, again, the next page, which has the number four in the bottom left-hand, and this is to add a new section blank to chapter four, and this is COLA appropriation, and the amendment is to replace seven million, I don't know why, okay, seven million dollars to six million eight hundred thousand dollars, and this is from the general fund to the Department of Administration for Government of Guam Retirees' Cost of Living to be paid fiscal year two thousand and seven.
Okay, on the motion, Senator Ben.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, for the record, though, the the COLA has been paid, and that money and that cash has gone out, so how are we going to recoup the two hundred thousand that we are now reducing the appropriation by when the cash has been let out, the payments have been made, and the checks have been cashed?
Senator Calvo, will you yield to that question?
I don't understand.
Oh, yeah, that's the question, right? Senator Penglinen?
Yes. Yeah, yield to the question, again, what has occurred, there's there is language in the bill, and these were amendments made earlier on in in this bill that would would pass on the responsibility of payment of of COLA payments for retirees of autonomous agencies, to those autonomous agencies which were re- which were funded originally by the general fund, and as obviously, this this number of two hundred thousand dollars, which is the delete, the which is the the reduction on the amounts on general fund appropriation is reflective of that of that policy move that has been initiated earlier in the bill. So obviously, there's going to have to be some sort of of bookkeeping adjust- adjustments made in from when regards to to the Guam, Gov. Guam General Fund with the autonomous agencies.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for that. I understand that bookkeeping that's going to have to occur, but since we're appropriating that additional money that we're reducing this appropriation by to be spent, bookkeeping is not going to do it, you know? We need the actual cash collection if we are in fact going to fund operational appropriations that will be spent to meet obligations. So I understand, you know, the the bookkeeping game here, but in reality, little too late, you know, we've, once again, I must reiterate that the cash of seven million dollars, from my understanding, the COLA has been paid, was paid in the first quarter of this budget cycle, and I'm just not sure of the appropriateness of recouping that cash, is now GPA going to write us a check, or write the general fund a check? I think that's what's got to be done. There may be a question of expugfacto application of this law after the fact, and so I just want to caution the body with regards to that.
Okay, oh, just a second recess.
Thank you, Mr.
Okay, the next one is number six.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the next amendment I have, again, is to add a new section blank to the miscellaneous provisions chapter to read, a section blank of real property tax amnesty, and this is notwithstanding Title V GCA twenty-two, four, two, five. All real property tax proceeds levied pursuant to Title XI GCA twenty-four, one oh three for the years prior to, including the year two thousand and five, and collected by on behalf of the government of Guam through the Department of Revenue Revenue and Taxations' Real Property Tax Amnesty Program shall be deposited into the Treasury of Guam to the credit of the general fund for the payment of general fund obligations.
Okay, on the amendment, Senator Penglinen.
Once again, Mr. Mr. Chair, I, you know, the, we all say that we have to find, you know, real funding source for the payment of obligations for education, which is a priority, and there is existing law that, of course, sets aside real property tax collections to fund the capital need requirements of the Department of Education, and really, if we implement that law to its fullest, every single year, the Department of Admini- the the Department of Education, the Guam Public School System, will have in the neighborhood of about twenty million dollars available to meet its capital needs. If we do this, you know, then we won't have this hundred and ten-day heat wave at Southern High and eighty days at at Tamuning Elementary if we in fact are going to place the priority with regards to the capital needs of the Department of Education, the Guam Public School Systems by setting aside the real property tax. It is my, you know, my contention that really, we're trying to pass a bill, one of the objectives of this bill is that we want to present a good face to standard and pores in the review process, and one of the the no-no's, if you might want to say, with regards to managing your budget, is that when you have revenues earmarked for a specific purpose, that it gets to that specific purpose, that you don't divert that revenue to meet operational requirements, such as what we had really with the shortage of revenues, and we had to go buy borrow money in order to meet our payroll, which placed us on the credit watch. So we have a law on the books that says real property tax shall be dedicated to the Guam Public School System. Part of the real property collections go to pay for the education bond that was floated in nineteen ninety-three, I believe, where we are paying for the new schools that we've built over the last fifteen years or so, twelve, fifteen years, and then the balance of that is supposed to be earmarked or dedicated and made to be placed in this territorial educational facilities fund for payment of the Guam Public School System needs. Now, we're saying we're going to borrow the money that we've dedicated for this purpose to meet our operational requirements, and so I can't see how this provision really is going to present that kind of good financial management, sticking to the financial plan, following the laws regarding financial resources in this budget. I can't see how this provision's going to help us, as I had suggested earlier, you know, to the good chair, if we in fact want to follow the law and present a financial picture where we are in fact following a financial plan, and in this case, not only a financial plan, but more the law with regards to the dedication of our financial resources, of earmarking these, the cleaner way of doing it for the purpose of presenting some semblance of sound financial practices within the government of Guam is that we would just leave the money in the territorial educational facilities fund, then appropriate that money to the Department of Education, the Guam Public School System for that purpose, and reduce the general fund appropriation to the Department of Education, Guam Public School System by this five million dollars. And that way, you really are following that that narrow path of of sound financial accounting with regards to the allocation of the resources and the distribution of your finance, of your revenues for the purposes stated in your laws. And so, while I understand exactly what we're doing here, I just don't think it takes us any further down that road of presenting a financial picture to standard and pores that is going to help us at all. I think that this kind of trying to 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 circumvent the law in order to meet operational requirements, I think is is taking us away from our objective when we started this discussion of trying to pass this bill, and so I object.
Okay, on the Calvo's amendment, there's an objection. So as many as are in favor of the Calvo's amendment, please signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, there are eight votes. Motion, pass.
Yeah, thank, thank you very much.
Okay, Senator Calvo, on your number seven amendment.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the next amendment, again, has number seven in the back, in the bottom left, add section blank to the miscellaneous provisions chapter, and this is section blank additional revenues, notwithstanding section seven-one-two-zero, chapter seven of Title Twenty-two GCA, and section forty-four of chapter six of this act. The sum of five hundred thousand dollars from the additional revenues from registration fees on non-immigrant temporary workers for fiscal year two thousand and seven shall be deposited into the Treasury of Guam to the credit of the general fund for the payment of the general fund obligations. Again, this is similar to, this kind of completes the the amendments that were made earlier in regards to the use of certain funds from special funds in for operational purposes in general fund.
Okay, on the Calvo's amendment, number seven, is there any objection? Without objection, then, so ordered. Okay, the number eight amendment.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the next, the next amendment is to add a new section blank to the miscellaneous provisions chapter, says sections blank reductions, and the appropriations for the department agencies' operations contained in chapters three and four of this act shall be further reduced by the respective amounts itemized in the appendix attached. And you have on the following page, sir, the appendix of all the agencies where there have been reductions, and then, of course, the grand total in the bottom.
Okay, on the Calvo's amendment, number eight, Senator Penglinen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, I, you know, I I object to this this amendment because of the effect it will have on on the various departments and agencies. When we first started the discussion, we were looking at a a two-million-dollar reduction, really, to the last five, six months of the operating budgets of the various departments and agencies of this government. And we came in here, and we had every single agency appear before us, trying to find a way to live within that two-million-dollar reduction to their last five months of operation. What is even more egregious with regards to the action we're taking with this amendment is that many of the departments and agencies, University of Guam, for one, Guam Community College, did not receive their actual cash allotment from the first half of the fiscal year. They were short by one million, two million, three million dollars in some cases. Now, what they did when these departments and agencies was actually used restricted funds that they had at their disposal that need to be repaid in order to meet the conditions of those restricted funds. They had no choice at those times, so they actually swept some of those funds with the promise and the hope that those unreleased or undeposited cash from their allotment releases would be given back to them in order to reimburse those restricted funds so that they comply with the terms and conditions of those restricted funds. What we're doing in some cases in this in this reduction is we're not only now not going to be able to reimburse those agencies and departments for the unrestricted amounts, we're now going to even cut them further for the rest of the fiscal year, way beyond the two-point-five percent cut. When they came in and told us they could live with a two-point-five percent cut, it was with the belief that the unreleased allotments in terms of their cash deposits to their operating accounts would be made up. Now, with this, there's no hope of that. There really is no hope, and therefore, we are jeopardizing the operations of these departments and agencies, and in some instances, you know, some of the terms and conditions of those restricted funds. We know that the departments and agencies, for example, are are getting hit in in this area. We have, if I look at this correctly, Department of Public Health and Social Services will receive a one-point-six-million-dollar cut. I am aware that, for example, only one single pharmacy within this entire island will accept MIP patients because the pharmacy accounts are not current and they haven't been paid. Another one-point-six percent or one-point-six-million-dollar cut to that department will mean nobody will take MIP part pharmacy prescriptions, and these individuals will not be able to get their medication. And what's the end result? They go up to the hospital, they get their day medication or their treatment medication for two or three days to attend to the condition that they're being seen for, and with no additional medication, because nobody else will take MIP, they'll come right back to the to the hospital and therefore compound the financial problems that the hospital faced by providing uncompensated care. So, you know, when we look at this, we do need to face some cuts, but I liken the cuts that we need to make to, you know, no offense to to my good colleague from Baragada, the lady, but the cuts have to be like circumcision. With these cuts, some of them are just castrations of those departments and agencies. We're neutering our departments and agencies with the indiscriminate cuts that we're making in this for the vital services in different areas of these departments and agencies. We don't need, you know, a battle axe in the cuts that we're doing, we need some scalpels here, and this approach to the way we're looking at making up these shortfalls is taking a battle axe, and when you take a battle axe and you hit something, there's going to be collateral damage with all the blunt trauma that occurs for where that hat, that axe hits. But when you take a scalpel to it, you know, you can surgically then begin the cuts made so that not everybody and not the entire system suffers, but the blunt trauma that's going to be suffered by the way this cuts are being proposed tonight, I think, are going to result in not just, we're not talking about the employees at the departments and agencies anymore, we're talking about the people of Guam who depend on these departments and agencies for the programs and the services that they provide. So for that, Mr. Speaker, I object to this approach to this.
Senator Ruscio, on the Calvo's amendment.
Thank you very much, Ms. Speaker. Ms. Speaker, I know it's been a very long eight weeks for every single member of this legislature, and now, when we're down to the moment of truth, we're still not being truthful. We just adopted amendment number three, which reflects a one percent cut, and then with one fell swoop of a three or four-sentence provision, it says that the reduc- further reduction shall take place with appendix, with the attached appendix. Ms. Chairman, we have been very consistent. I beg to differ with some of the comments made by our colleagues that for those of us who want to restore certain agencies, we're being inconsistent by voting for those reinstat- reinstatements, at the same time, we're trying to make a a consciousness and a conscious decision that this government is facing dire, dire financial straits. I object to this amendment, Mr. Chairman, particularly because I think we need to be very open and transparent about what these cuts mean to the agency. I'm sure that the the Department of Corrections will be wanting to find out that their total cut is eight-hundred-forty-two-thousand-seven-hundred-ninety-nine dollars, and the list goes on and on, but we're not being very upfront about what these cuts actually are. The other message we're sending, Ms. Chairman, is that we can't make a decision. On one hand, we exempt, take the judiciary, for example, and then the next day, they have, they're they're facing another cut, the following couple of weeks after that, they're they've been restored, just the other day, we restored them, and now this amendment reflects a cut that the judiciary has to take. The same can be said for the mayors, for the attorney general, for the police department. Ms. Chairman, we were hoping and we tried many times to make this process very open and transparent, we tried to have a public hearing for all of the proposed fee increases, and I'm, we haven't been successful at that, and now, the amendment offered by the chairman simply states that further reduction shall take place and refer to the following append- appendix for those corresponding, but then amendment prior to that represents a one percent cut, so I object to the amendment, Ms. Chairman, this is not the way to go about recognizing the the serious cash shortfalls facing the government, and I'm very disappointed in how this process was handled over the last eight weeks. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Senator Gauthier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, colleagues. I must also express my discomfort with the resulting amendment that's being discussed at this time and the attached appendix. I I enjoy very much working with the chairman and other members of the legislature, and over the last eight and nine weeks, it's been difficult, but I think we've all worked well and tried to be civil with each other and look to the best interest of the community. As you know, Mr. Chairman, in the last two days, I was successful in moving to try to reduce the impact of potential cuts on some very strategic entities. I was not successful in trying to restore some funds to the University of Guam. I was successful in restoring some funds to the Guam Police Department, but in seeing the appendix, which is part of the amendment being proffered by our good chair, the Guam Police Department, the judiciary, the Department of Law, and the mayor's council, all which saw restoration of the cuts, are now seeing cuts again. I am quite dismayed by it, I'm not sure how it happened, I do know there was some discussion, but I don't recall, Mr. Chairman, agreeing to a reduction in these strategic areas, particularly in the area of public safety, Guam Police Department. I'm very concerned about the safety of our community and the well-being of our people in their neighborhoods and in their homes. It's important for the public to know, as Senator Ruscio said, that these cuts are very substantial. In the case of the University of Guam, they are now facing a cut of over two-point-five million dollars. I don't know how the university will sustain itself with a cut like that. In addition, the Guam Community College will sustain a cut close to half a million dollars. I don't know how they will sustain themselves. Public health, over two million dollars, mental health, which is under consent decree, over half a million dollars, the Guam Fire Department, over ha- over two million dollars, Guam Police Department, over one-point-five million dollars, I, and the Corrections Department. I'm I'm quite worried, Mr. Chairman. Now, I don't know if it'd be the appropriate moment, appropriate moment, but I would like to ask the indulgence of of my colleagues to please reconsider this. Yes, we all under, are under tremendous pressure to try to find a way to balance the budget of this government, but we cannot do it at the expense of public safety, health, or education, and I'm hoping that we can proceed to consider this as we move forward. I'm very, very concerned. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Senator Tina Munia Barnes. Okay, Senator Semesel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I I I feel compelled to speak and support the earlier speakers. As you mentioned earlier, I, since eight weeks ago, the four pillars upon which I would like to defend their budgets, and one of them, I mean, we've already like to defend their budgets, and one of them, I mean, already, you know, health and public safety, we took care of the police, and, and education, they're exempted, but one agency that I honestly believe can bring in almost 10 times to 100 times their, the dollar that we invest in them, and that's the Department of Revenue and Taxation. The things that I look at is, in, in, in some of the agency to support the other three pillars of health, public safety, and education, is who, you know, who brings in the beef, much of it. Now, we're, we're, we have a cut proposal here, almost, I think, three quarters of a million dollars, 706,000. Now, if I took that 706,000, and I believe we, we invested in revenue agents, revenue officers, taxpayers preparing, I think we would, we will probably be able, at a guesstimate, yield $7 million. I really believe for every $1 that we invest in revenue taxation, even at the lowest level, I think they, they could yield $10 at the lowest to $100, so, you know, and if I just did my common sense math, if we took away 706,000, 222, we're taking away opportunities, you know, to spend this money to make even tenfold that, that amount. So, I, I, I must, was that, oppose this amendment, based on one of the pillars that I mentioned, revenue enhancement, and the only agency, line agency, that can do that, bring home the bacon, is the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other speaker? Okay, Senator Blas.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Mr. Chair, I have to agree with the speakers before me, that this is a hard pill to swallow, and, you know, I, I don't like it any much, any more than, than, than the others do. But, you know, Mr. Chair, this, these are, these are reductions that are going to hurt. These are reductions that need to be taken. And you're right, we've been here for the last eight weeks, and we've, we've argued a number of good points, we've compromised, you know, debated, and we've come to this hour, where, you know, we're going to have to look at what we're, what we're going to apportion out to the different agencies. And I'd like to proffer that if these numbers don't look comfortable, and granted that these numbers are based on where we're at today, with regards to our revenues, how much we're going to be getting in, and how much we're going, how much, the amount that we only have to spend. And so I proffer that if it's uncomfortable in some places, then make the changes. Making the changes to provide one agency more, and another agency less. At the end of the day, we're just going to have the same amount of money, and then at the end of the day, we can only apportion out that same amount. So it's hard, but it has to be done. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask for information if the mover of the amendment would yield.
Senator Calvo, will you yield to Senator Palacios?
Can I hear the question, sir, first?
No, no, I, I, I want to.
Please state your, please state your question.
You know, yesterday, I understand that there were about five agencies, to which the 5% automatic deappropriation was not applied, and with these new figures, it appears that, that, that did not make any difference. And so I wonder whether, if you can explain, why are you moving now these figures, and I guess, what, what is the alternative?
Senator Calvo, give me, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yes, thank you, thank you very much, and again, the, the answer I have to the speaker is, is obviously, you know, as we moved along the other day, and there was an imbalance that occurred as a result of the, of the protections of certain agencies from the deappropriation, there, there came about this morning again, a meeting of minds, and I guess maybe there had been some differences of opinion on, on the, on the, the shortfalls, and how that they would be spread out. And in the discussions that were, were had amongst senators, again, very tough decision, we saw the shortfalls, and saw that if the entities that were to absorb this shortfall were only to be the ones that had been exempted in, in, in the prior day, it would be even more catastrophic in regards to the pain in the agencies, and I'll give you an example, public health, mental health, DICED, University of Guam. As a matter of fact, my answer is, is part of what I was going to close here. A previous speaker was mentioning the cuts, and she gave dollar amounts on each one of the agencies, and the amounts of those reductions, based on this spreading out. But the problem was, she was reading from the wrong sheet. The sheet that, the numbers she had read were based on a spreadsheet that we had made this evening, because of, of a quest from some senators, that maybe they would look at exempting certain agencies. And again, not just Public, Guam Public School System, not just the Guam Memorial Hospital, but agencies that many of you, and the same is, I feel they're, they're important as well, the mayors, judiciary, AG, Guam Police Department, but the spreadsheet she wrote those, she read those numbers out, were from that calculation with those exemptions, and they are painful. And that is what would have occurred if we started picking one over the other. And obviously, with this numbers, that are these cuts here, they're painful, but they're spread out. And, you know, I feel like, I feel like Solomon, and where you have the two women coming with one baby, and each one saying that it was their baby, and Solomon's decree would be, he would rip the baby in half, so that both mothers would have their child. This is not an easy decision. Again, if you're to look at the spreadsheet that has been moved by me as, as, as mover the amendment, the numbers are painful as well. Anyway, again, I guess the question here, the answer here is, there has been a spreading out of the pain, but there will be pain.
And that affects, that applies to all the agencies, all governmental entities, the same percentage.
With the exception of the Guam Public School System and the Guam Memorial Hospital.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Tina Munia Barnes.
Señor Massey, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chair, I'd be remiss if I didn't chime in on my opposition to this amendment, and I say that with a heavy heart, Mr. Chair. Just in the last couple of days, just in the last evening, we talked about missions and mandates of a lot of these agencies, and what truly the purpose is for the government of Guam, which is to provide the basic services of government. And when I spoke about the agencies, that I can give you some examples on, the mayor's council, who continues to be the first responders to, and pick up, and the council that picks up the slack for a lot of the agencies that can't fulfill their mandates because of, of constraints that they have, the public defender's office, who continues to provide legal representations to those who cannot afford legal representation on their own, to the office of the chief medical examiner, who came and, and, and gave a presentation saying, you know what, I've worked, and, and I've, I don't ask for what I don't need. The budget you give to me, if I even take a, any cuts, I wouldn't be able to survive. And he's a really conservative man. I just think that, that, that we here, Mr. Chair, are, are really missing the point of what government of Guam is all about, what our government has to provide to our community as a whole, and it really, really bothers me. I, I, I just have to stand in opposition to this amendment. Thank you.
Any other speaker? Senator Wampin.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, as many of my other colleagues have voiced their opposition, I also feel the same in which that we've always set basically a priority, the priority of health, education, and, and public safety. And this is actually, the reductions that we're talking about here now, in terms of, yes, everybody sharing the cost, or the reduction, has really driven a division, basically, amongst everyone here. I, I'm not, of course, I would admit, not, you know, an expert in, in finance and budgeting, and I was looking to, you know, the leadership and the administration to, to assist in terms of setting a priority as well, at least a priority in which the people have spoken up before. And yet, you know, we're finding ourselves now, that setting that as a priority, at least as of yesterday, and then today, of course, we've seen the, the shift. And although other entities still in those top three categories are, were not even extended or restored, technically then shows that, at the same time, only major portions of major agencies only were, were, at least as of yesterday or last night, spared. This as well, I mean, I feel very strongly that we, we really need to, to support the three most important agencies, and, and although we're not saying, I'm not saying that the others are not important, but I think that some of those other agencies, you know, would be able to, to continue to, to function, and by supporting, of course, you know, the other entities in which everyone basically looks to as a means of, you know, supporting not just the entire community when it comes to, to safety, but supporting, of course, all of the children, and what their future would hold for them. And then, yes, one other important factor would be the health of, you know, every community. So it is, I mean, very difficult, I understand, for every single person in here, and it's very difficult for myself, and I've struggled with this from day one, trying to, to reconcile the, these figures, and the numbers somehow are just not coming together. OBF, of course, had a figure, the administration had a different figure, Senator Respecho also has a different figure, and, and I think at a time like this, I think it would have been so critical that there be a meshing of those numbers, and there's this uncertainty, not knowing, you know, what, what the revenues are going to be like, and that's what makes this even harder. And, and I don't know if this is even appropriate, Mr. Mr. Chair, but because this is such a, a really big division, that we really need to, to reconcile this. So, I, I too then basically voiced my, my objection.
Okay, on the cause amendment, okay, we, we will recess for, for a minute or two. You have two more speakers on this, on this amendment, and it looks like everybody seems to be tired, you know, tired, and there's, might also provide, maybe time for the, the body to, to just look over the appendix, and if there's any change that will come about, we'll, we'll do it. So we'll recess until tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, I object.
Tomorrow at 10:00 AM in the morning.
Mr. Chairman, I object. We should vote now, we have an amendment, let's vote and get it over with.
No, we, we still have two more speakers on this. Okay, so anyway, the chair rules that we will recess until 10 o'clock in the morning.
Point of information, there's more speakers right now?
Yes.
Where, where are they? Who are they, and where are they?